...everyone here tonight, and I'm officially opening this meeting at this time. I would like to state the purpose of tonight's meeting. Of course, as all of you know and have read in the public notice, the purpose of tonight's meeting is being held to organize the Board of Trustees of Banbury County School District. Board members are being sworn in, and the newly constituted board will elect its officers and make some necessary decisions. So first and foremost, I'd like to start off by telling each and every one of you present tonight, obviously you received a letter pointing you to the new board pending your acceptance of that, so I'd like to say congratulations to each and every one of you. If you notice that item number two on your agenda, words of consolidation, from Representative Justin Bamberg, he did send his solemn request, he's unable to make it tonight, so we're going to skip item number two on our agenda and go straight to item number three. With that, I'd like to welcome the Executive Director for South Carolina School Board Association, Mr. Scott Price. Welcome to the meeting, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Ladies and gentlemen, I cannot tell you how honored I am in part of tonight's proceeding. My name is Scott Price, I'm the Executive Director for the South Carolina School Board Association, and quite honestly, I work for you. So, I'm very thrilled to have the opportunity to come here, congratulate you all on your appointment to the Banbury County School District Board. It's a historic moment. This is a historic moment that had a lot of eyes in the state are watching, and so you all have stepped into a very prominent role, one which I know in the past couple of years, we all know how much more important education has become in South Carolina and nationally. And so, the work that you do is something that will set precedent for other districts in the state that are looking at consolidation. So you've got a lot of work ahead of you, and I want to commit to you that the School Board Association will be by your side, will be here to help you and to work with you through this as best we can. I brought a couple of things that I just wanted to point out. One of the things that I brought is, of course, our School Board Association pen, I hope you all will probably wear that, and also a pamphlet that talks about the various services that we as an association provide to you. That is, things like on-site training that we provide, we do have statewide conferences where you can get professional development in front of your training. In fact, we have one coming up in February, our annual conference, that I hope that I'll get an opportunity to see all of you there for that. It is a wonderful opportunity, again, for professional development for you as a school board. We do provide policy and legal services and referendum consulting, legislative and advocacy services, and one of the things that most of you, all of, I think all of you are veterans of the education system, many of you are veterans, school board members, but of course, I do too, our ten units members are having an education background, so advocacy on behalf of public education is one of the most important things that you as a board do. And, you know, we can just look at the various bills that are being debated, starting last week when the legislature came into session, they hit the ground running, and we've got several bills tomorrow that are coming up for debate, and we'll be able to do that. But your role as an advocate on behalf of public education is so very important. You all working together to move your district forward and move the state of South Carolina forward, and the only way we can get that done is if we work together through advocacy. So, thank you for, again, being part of that. We do have communication services that we provide, and I know many of you get the e-clippings that we send out every day, and they're kind of therapeutic for me, because I find that if I'm not having such a good day, I can go look at the e-clips, and there's somebody out there that's having the worst day than I am, so it's always kind of a little bit of therapy for me to look at those. But there's also an opportunity to learn, to see what's going on in other districts, and that's the same thing that you get through the fellowship that you get through conferences that we provide, we have three major conferences a year. Also, we have the School Board Insurance Trust, and I'm proud to say that both Banburrs One and Two are members of both of the insurance trusts, and we have property casualty and worker comp, and again, we'd like to, hopefully that will continue as you move forward as a consolidated board and a consolidated district. I did mention that we do have policy and legal services that we provide, we have, including myself, we have pre-attorneys on staff, and I've really, when I took over as Executive Director five years ago, one of the things I really wanted to do was beef up our policy services area, and that is something that we can certainly help you all with as you move forward in the consolidation. We have experience with policy, consolidating policies, we worked with Hampton Districts, we worked with Orangeburg, we also worked with twice with the Clarendon Districts, had they been through two series of consolidations, and that's something that we can definitely help you all with. But I represent your associations, the board association of your associations, and there are a lot of opportunities for you all to be involved, and I hope that you take advantage of that. Again, I mentioned the Boardship Institute, which is a year-round training program that we provide, we do have opportunities for you to come up to the State House and help us lobby over at the legislature, we do regional meetings, and all where we come to you and talk to you about legislative issues that are going on, and getting input from you, our members, on how we can proceed on those. Resolutions process, we'll be sending notices out in March, asking our member boards to submit proposed resolutions for the upcoming delegate assembly in December, so that's another opportunity, and maybe you'll be a delegate at the delegate assembly itself, and again, that's one other opportunity. We have a twenty-member Board of Directors representing regions in the state, and it might be an opportunity at some point in the future for you to become a member of our Board of Directors, and I certainly look forward to that and talk to you about that. You might have an opportunity to present at the end of conference, I know the deadline's passed for submitting presentation proposals, but again, that's something every year that we solicit from our membership, so that's an opportunity too. But we just, you know, again, webinars is something that we're doing more and more of, and then advocacy, and again, I will come back to advocacy, but it's just all, it's just so important that we are working together to support public schools and support public education in South Carolina, because if we're not telling our story, somebody else is telling it for us, so it's just so very important. And again, I just, when Ms. Beaumont Park called and asked me to come here this evening, I just was beside myself, because I'm just so proud to be a part of this, and so proud of you all for stepping up and being a part of this historic moment moving forward as a consolidated district and consolidated board, and just want to reiterate, if there's anything that we at the association can do to help you, please don't hesitate to give us a call, give me a call. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So at this time, we are about to swear in the new members to our new Banbury County School District Consolidated School Board members, but as you know, we have some individuals listening via radio, some are attending virtually, and while many of us in this room know who all of you are, there are many in attendance here tonight, listening in tonight, who might not know who you are. So at this time, before we get to the swearing-in part, I would ask that each one of you possibly or please introduce yourself and state where you currently reside, so that our listeners and our visitors here tonight get to know who you are. So, may we start with Mrs. Hurst?
Good evening, my name is Cindy Hurst, and I live about two miles north of Denmark. We've lived there for about forty-five years. We have three sons who are adults, all of them graduated from Denmark High School, and we have three grandchildren who are in the school district too. Thank you.
My name is Harriet Coker, I am a retired school teacher. Banbury School District One's been a major part of my life since nineteen sixty-five. So, it was actually the reason we moved to Banbury. And that makes me very interested in, I want to see Banbury County School District be successful. And it's an honor and a huge responsibility to be asked to serve on this board, so I'm going to learn from these people. And I look forward to working with administration and the school board, and it's a huge responsibility we're to, we need to make sure every child and student in Banbury County has every possible educational opportunity.
Good evening, my name is Blossom Thompson. I'm the oldest school board member on here for twenty, it's going on my twenty-one years on the School Board Association. Tonight with me is my three children and two stepdaughters with me, so I have a number of six family members out in the audience tonight, and I'm going to do my best to do what I did for the last twenty-one years on the school board to serve the community and the families and the children of Banbury One and Banbury Two District. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Gwendolyn Bambury, I reside in Earhart, South Carolina, and I am happy to be a part of this board. I have been a member for two years and look forward to continuing the work of the board for the Banbury County School District.
Good evening, my name is Naomi Echol. I was one of the newest board members, beginning on the tail end of someone who's moved out of the district. I reside in Branchville, right, still a part of Banbury County, of course. I have a son that just graduated, and is a freshman at South Carolina right now, and I have a daughter that's a ninth grader here in the district. So I have a vested interest in making sure that this county and the kids here have the best education possible, and I'm so very honored to continue to serve on the Consolidated Board, woman board.
Beverly Beaumont Park, I reside in Olar, I'm a graduate of Banbury-Earhart High School. I've been serving on the Banbury Two District Board for six years, four as a member, two as a chair, and my commitment was to make sure that the children of Banbury County get a better education and the best education possible, so that they can be the best individuals and grow up and have a really good future in this world. I support our Banbury County School District wholeheartedly, and I'm looking forward to the movement and the changes that are coming forward, and I thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Janeth Walker, and I was the Board Chair for Banbury School District One until my recent resignation. My husband and my daughter are here tonight supporting me in the audience. I have three children total, two of which were educated with the Banbury School District One school, by this particular school district. It's been a pleasure to be able to serve on the board with Banbury School District One, and it's been a pleasure actually getting to know the members of Banbury School District Two, and also getting to know, well, I've known Ms. Coker as well as Ms. Hurst for a number of years, but it's a pleasure being able to work with all of them, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity that I've been given, and to be able to serve the kids in this district, the kids in this community, and the personnel and the staff with Banbury County Consolidated School District.
Hi, my name is John Hires, I grew up down in Earhart, live in Banbury now. My wife and I are both products of Banbury-Earhart High School, and fortunately, both of my sons graduated from Banbury-Earhart High School. So, like I said, I, you know, I've had a vested interest in our education system here in the county, and I look forward to continuing to serve not only the students, but the administration and the citizens of the county.
I'm Tony Hallman, I grew up in Govee, I now reside in Denmark, and I and my four children are products of Denmark Old School District Two. I'm serving in my fourteen years on the District Two Board until I recently resigned. I have gone forward to be a part of this board and working with the administration and staff into doing what we've been doing for the last fourteen years and making sure that our children get the very best education possible. Thank you.
Well, thank you all, I appreciate all of your enthusiasm and your willingness to serve on the board. I would like to, at this time, make note that there are some processes that we have to go through in forming a new board or becoming new board members, and one is that you can't serve on two boards at one time, so just for public information, I have officially received resignations from all of the Banbury One and Banbury Two now former board members. So you are, I believe that clears you to be sworn in to serve on our new county board. So at this time, for the swearing-in, I would ask that our legal representative, Mr. Charles Boykin, come forward and conduct our swearing-in ceremony.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, it is my understanding that you have agreed that you will all rise, come and position yourselves in front. We'll fold you, and we will do the swearing-in in that fashion. If you will work with me, this is where you're going to be, you will work with me, we're going to fold you, and then we will swear you in, and then we will photograph you. Just pick a spot, and we'll make sure that you're all pretty where you are, how's that? Okay? That's wonderful, that's wonderful. Now, give yourself room, because you're going to have to raise your right hand, and then what we're going to do is I'm going to go over the oath. The first, you will hear "I." After that, "I" will pause, but each one of you will say your name. After I've heard all names, then we'll go ahead and I will modulate so that you will be able to repeat after me. Is that fair? Right hands raised. "I." "I."
Cindy Hurst, Beverly Beaumont Park, Blossom Thompson, Gwendolyn Bambury, Naomi Echol, Janeth Walker.
John Hires.
Do solemnly swear or affirm, whichever word, swear or affirm, I do solemnly that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified.
according to the Constitution of this state
according to the Constitution of this state.
to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed
to exercise the duties
to which I have been appointed. and that I will
and that I will.
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
discharge the duties thereof
discharge the duties thereof.
and preserve
and preserve.
protect
protect.
and defend
and defend.
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state.
and of the United States
and of the United States.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, you may disconnect. So with that, the Chair Superintendent, I now call the first Banbury County Consolidated School Board meeting to order. Our first order of business tonight is the election of board officers. As a new board, the member should organize itself with the election of a chairperson, the vice-chairperson, and the secretary. It is my understanding that the board has agreed to do open voting, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
At this time, floor is open for nominations of chairperson.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that Mrs. Bamberg be
no, no.
Walker. Mrs. Walker be our chairperson for the Consolidated Board.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor say "a."
"a."
All opposed? Any opposed? No, with the record chair, there was no opposed. And with that, I'll turn the gavel over to the Banbury County Consolidated School Board Chairperson, Ms. Janeth Walker. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, at this time, board members, I will open up the floor for a nomination for a vice chair.
Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Ms. Beverly Beaumont Park.
All right, we have a nomination for Ms. Beverly Beaumont Park. Are there any others? If not, we will close the nomination and we will take on a vote. All in favor of Ms. Beverly Beaumont Park serving as Banbury County Consolidated School District Vice Chair, please signal by saying "a."
"a."
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it. We will then move on to the secretary. I will open the floor up for a secretary for the Consolidated District Board.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we select Mr. Tony Hallman as our secretary for the Banbury County Consolidated School Board.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Tony Hallman. Any others? None, we have a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying "a."
"a."
Any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it, we have a secretary and a vice chair and a chair. We will now move down to item number seven on the agenda, which is the 2022 School Board Recognition Review of the Ethical Principles, and I will turn that over to Dr. Brown.
As newly sworn in board members, South Carolina School Board Association each year publishes the ethical principles that board members pledge to abide by, so at this time, you have a copy of these in your packet, if you'll get them in front of you. What is tradition is that we have board members do a round robin, and I will ask that we start maybe with Mr. Hallman, and let Mr. Hallman read the introductory statement, you don't have to read it each time, and then maybe read the first ethical principle that is in bold print, and then move on to Mr. Hires and so forth and so on till we've read them all. Okay?
South Carolina School Board Member, ethical principles. As a member of my district's school board, I pledge my efforts to improve public education in my community, and will solemnly try to represent the interests of the entire district when making decisions, and to rely on available facts and on our judgments rather than on individuals or special interest groups.
To understand the proper role of the board to set policies governing the district, and to hire the chief administrative officer to carry out these policies.
To encourage and open exchange of ideas by all board members during the decision-making
Seek regular communication between the board and students, staff, and all segments of the community.
To attend all board meetings, to study issues facing the board, and to enact policies and official actions only after full discussion of such issues.
Work with other board members in a conscientious and courteous manner, befitting the public trust placed in the position of school board trusted.
Communicate concern and public reaction to the board, policies, and school programs to the superintendent and other board members in a professional manner.
Support employment of the persons best qualified for staff positions, and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff.
Avoid conflicts of interest, and to refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain.
Encourage recognition of the achievements of students and staff, and the involvement of community residents.
Support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff.
Take no individual action which would compromise the integrity of the board or administration, and to respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act.
Study current educational issues and participate in training programs such as those offered through the South Carolina School Board Association and the National School Board Association.
And make our district's educational setting the best possible to encourage all students to achieve and to love learning.
Excellent. And with that, along with your pledge, we have a poster, and after our board meeting, I will ask that each one of you sign the pledge, which we will display publicly for all to see. Thank you.
Great. All right, we are now down to item number eight on the agenda, which is discussion and vote on legal services. And I will turn that over to Ms., or actually, Dr. Brown.
I may as well just stand right. As we move into a new consolidated school district, all school districts have to have legal representation, so at this time, I'm asking the board to entertain a vote on legal services, and my recommendation is that we continue with the legal representation that has been serving both Banbury District One and Banbury District Two. They are most familiar with our processes, policies, procedures, staff, and have been highly involved throughout this entire process, and very well informed, and often informs us of this entire consolidation process. Still lots of work to be done, but it is my recommendation that we retain the services of Boykin Legal Services.
All right. All right, board members, you have heard what Dr. Brown has asked of us. What is the pleasure with regards to retaining the legal services of Boykin and Davis, Boykin and Associates? What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we continue with the services of Walker and Davis LLC.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying "a."
"a."
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it. We are now down to item number nine, which is discussion and vote of shared services agreement, and again, that would be you, Dr. Brown.
That's it for you. What's your pleasure?
I'm sorry?
Either one of us, but I could do it.
I could do that.
Banbury School District One and Banbury School District Two entered an agreement last year to consolidate the administrative services of both districts under the governance of two boards. Now, as a new district and new board, I'd like to continue the administrative consolidation under the governance of this board. Should the board approve the current shared services agreements, with the understanding that this arrangement can and will be reviewed and modified as necessary for next year. So currently, we have shared services agreements in place for superintendentcy, deputy superintendent, finance director, technology director, food services director, and technology coach, and I'm asking the board to continue approval of those administrative shared services under the governance of this board.
All right, board members, you have heard Dr. Brown with regards to the shared services agreements that she would like to continue for our new board, what is the pleasure of the board with regards to this?
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
This will be for the balance of the year, or is this from after the new school year?
Yes.
These shared services agreement, this agreement that we're talking about here? These shared services agreement, this agreement that we're talking about here?
And this is where I'll ask Mr. Boykin to chime in if I may speak. But it is certainly from this point on working under the governance of this board moving forward. And then we will at a later day review contracts for the 22, 23s.
Okay. And Mr. Boykin, can we, you know, vote on that separate from the previous two school boards? You know, the two districts?
You can vote to assume that responsibility tonight, yes sir.
Okay.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we continue with the shared services brought to us from our superintendent, Dr. Donnie Brown, going forward for the remainder of the year until we decide further.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
A motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it. We are now down to item number 10, which is discussion and vote on consultants. And I will turn that over to you again.
Okay, Vanburg School Districts One and Two accepted resumes for consultants last year. Dr. Dean Whitwer, who is attending virtually and is present on the monitor to my left. Dr. Dean Whitwer and Dr. Zona Jefferson were two responding persons who presented the skills and experience and that looked most compatible. Dr. Jefferson was not available at the time, but Dr. Whitwer conducted the consolidation planning. Now, Dr. Jefferson is available and she and Dr. Whitwer are both willing to work together to help with consolidation at this point. Given where consolidation is now, we believe that the two consultants would be essential to help meet the time constraints and to have the district ready to start students by July 1, 2022. And with that, I'm making a recommendation that we accept the two consultants, Dr. Dean Whitwer, continue working with us as we move through this consolidation process along with Dr. Zona Jefferson.
All right, board members, you have heard Dr. Brown speak on the consultants. That would be with Dr. Dean Whitwer as well as Dr. Zona Jefferson. What is the pleasure of the board with regards to these two consultants?
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we approve the proposed consultants.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it. We will now move down to item number 11, which is brief overview of activities for the coming months. And I will again turn that to you.
Okay, so what happens then? That's on everyone's minds. The first order of business for both the board along with the administrative staff for the new consolidated district and for the existing Vanburg One and Vanburg Two districts is strategic planning. We begin the nuts and bolts of consolidating our district completely. And with that, we will get together and start writing our strategic plan to finalize our consolidated district. And the biggest part of that is personnel and staffing needs. So together as a board and your administrative staff, to include myself and others, we'll be getting together to start writing our strategic plan and finalizing and sealing our consolidation. So that's coming in the months ahead.
All right. Thank you, we are now down to item number 12, which is discussion and approval of attendance of new member orientation.
As you might have, might recall, and Mr. Price spoke on it earlier, but as new board members, and according with state rule, all new board members have one year to complete new member orientation. The first opportunity is available to all of you during the annual meeting of South Carolina School Boards Association in February this year. Some of you have already been notified at the training. Others are being notified now. And you will be notified further. We would like to make arrangements for the attendance of all newly appointed, all of you rather, because all of you for the Consolidated Board are newly appointed board members to attend this required training. We know that many of you served on the school board before, but it's our understanding that your appointment now is treated as a new term which requires the new member training. Also, we know that nine members will require additional training within the district where the public can witness the training. In-district training, we believe, will increase the potential for success in our new district. This should allow parents and community members to be a formal part of the development of our district. So with that, I'd like the board to entertain approval of attendance for all of you to attend the required board training presented by Casma.
All right. You have heard Dr. Brown, what is the pleasure of the board with regards to all newly appointed board members attending training? Any time today? Yes ma'am.
Could you please say the dates?
Can you tell us what the dates are? I believe they're February.
Seventeenth through the nineteenth, I believe it is, is it, it will be held in Hilton Head.
Twenty.
The twenty.
Seventeenth through twentieth. It'll be held in Hilton Head Island, South Carolina. And I would like to, that's actually a great question, because I would like to specify the types of training that you all will have to go through. Your new member, your new board member orientation will be the one in Hilton Head in February. Following that, we'll have separate trainings on board member roles and responsibilities, effective decision-making for school boards, ethics, and public bodies. But the first and foremost and the most immediate is to get your new board member orientation out of the way because that is a requirement.
So this is in conjunction with the meeting coming up in...
Yes, yes and aye.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, that's a very good question. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and move forward with training for all new board members.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion on the floor and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, if you're in favor of this, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the ayes have it. And you touched a little bit on item number 13, Dr. Brown, if you want to touch a little bit more in depth or if Mr. Boykin would like to do that. This is regarding scheduling of in-district board training for new board members.
That's great, and that's exactly the board training that I just spoke about. You start with the new board member orientation and then you'll have subsequent training after that. We'll dig deeper into those issues. And Mr. Boykin will be involved in providing some of that training with us. And also part of that will be legal matters. So along with board members, you all get to become attorneys this way.
Okay, and that will be scheduled at a later date?
It will.
Okay. Do you want a motion on that or are we comfortable recognizing that that's what we need to do?
Yeah, the motion that is needed tonight is the approval of your attendance to the upcoming new board member orientation meeting.
All right. Then we will be...
School meetings after that.
That'll be fine, we'll be down to item number 14 then, that's consolidation update, and that would be you again.
Yes, ma'am.
Brown.
Okay, so I spoke a little bit about this all along the meeting tonight. Consolidation update, as I said earlier, Vanburg School District One and Vanburg School District Two agreed to a shared services agreement for district office administrative personnel last year. I think that that has been working fine. We have met with some challenges, not very many, but we have found ways to resolve those and worked collectively to get around those challenges. Going forward, the board, it will be the board to decide how the new district will be structured. And as I spoke on earlier, some of the decisions will be, will come through our strategic planning and how we'll want our staffing to look, our personnel to look, our schools to be structured, that kind of, that kind of thing. So all of that is forthcoming, that'll be held through many meetings. So bring your patience and your questions and we're gonna work through that together. And Mr. Boykin, I'll ask you to speak if you'd like to add to anything about consolidation and what's to come.
Thank you, Dr. Brown briefly. Ladies and gentlemen, what you have done as two separate boards, you've worked very hard to reduce the movement. What does that mean? That means you have reduced a lot of the movement. A lot of times with consolidation, they want to replace the superintendent, they want to replace all board members. Everything is new and nothing is familiar. Well, you have worked to keep as much of Vanburg as you can. And you're bringing in the best you can for Vanburg. And you will continue to do that as far as, you know, our advice is concerned, looking at the stability. One of the things that Dr. Brown can correct me is that last year, when you decided to consolidate the administration under two different governing bodies, you ended up with losing no staff to speak of, but increasing the number of people outside the district who wanted to come to work in the district. Also, you did not have a lag in students, but instead you had students wanting to come here. So what you're doing tonight is you are furthering the stability of your organization and I believe making it continuously more attractive. And so we will continue to work with you on that basis. Thank you.
And I'm gonna touch briefly on items 14B. The role of the superintendent in all of this is to keep you informed and to keep you educated to the best of my ability so that you can make the best informed decisions in this process. Myself along with our legal consultants, we will guide you and they will guide me through every step because I'm right there with you guys. I've never done this before either, this is all new. I think we've done an excellent job thus far. We've done a lot of the hard work already. I think our Vanburg One and Two board members can attest to that. But we've got much work to be done. And for the public's information, July 1, right now is our tentative date. At the midnight hour on June 30, 2022, both Vanburg School Districts One and Two will cease to exist. At 12:01 a.m. on July 1, 2022, or sooner, if we can get it done sooner. Vanburg County School District will be born. So like I said, my job and my role in this is to keep you informed, to keep you up to date, and to make sure that you get the training and information you need to make the best decisions possible for our consolidated school district. Our job collectively, yours and mine, is to keep our public, our communities as part of that and informed as much as possible.
And C?
And C, your job will be making the hardest decisions. We will move forward like I said with writing our policy, getting those in place. We'll have those ready to go before July, that governs our school. Those are our operation policies and procedures and have our staff be there.
Thank you. All right, we are now down to item number 15 with, that mentions about board member comments. I would like to start, if you would like to have any comments, you are free to speak. And I'll start here and we can go around.
One moment.
Well, I just, even though I've been on the board, I think this has really
Still working.
Opened my eyes to exactly what the board does more. Appreciate.
Something went wrong, please try again.
But I thank you all for giving me the opportunity, Dr. Brown and all of you, for giving me this opportunity to serve and to do what's best for our children. I thank you.
Still working.
I think Mr. Boykin said it well. You know, we've already been working together for almost two years now, really, a year and a half.
Sorry, something went wrong.
And we tried to make this as seamless as possible. And like I said, I think from the, from the student standpoint and the two schools, you know, like I said, you know, I think this consolidation has really gone unnoticed by the two schools. Now, the administration, the behind-the-scenes consolidating the services, there's been a lot of work done there, you know, with both districts. And like I said, I expect things to, you know, continue, you know, working as well as they have in the past. So like I said, I look forward to working with the members from the Demarc Board and look forward to getting things for Vanburg School District.
Okay. To the board, I would like to thank my fellow board members for believing in me to lead and to work collectively with each of you for the good of our children and our community. And I just thank you so much for that. To our community, our district has served and worked together over the years. And once consolidation became a reality for all of us, we began to work closely together and collectively with our vision towards becoming one. The first thing that we did was to stabilize the administration and then we combined the administration. Now, what we're doing is we are stabilizing the consolidation. We believe that consolidation does not cause problems. What consolidation does is that it reveals the weakness that's within a community. Our board, and I believe I can speak for every member here, that we are committed to doing all that we can for the children that we will all serve. And I just say thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it so much.
It feels like a breath of fresh air because this has been a long time coming. And to have worked as closely with Ms. Walker as I have in the past three years because actually it has been three years. And with Mr. Boykin encouraging us along the way and to have changed superintendents. No one knows what the board has actually gone through. But I thank God first of all because with his strength, we have maintained a strong board. I pray to God that he covers us as we go forward so that we can become a good example to other schools. That it does not take strive to move forward. It just takes a common denomination of different people coming together for the good of the children. And I just want to say to the community, I, Beverly Bonaparte, will continue to do my utmost best for the children of the Vanburg County School District.
I just want to think, echo what has already been said and also just say, I know that our community collectively have been through so much with COVID and also, you know, with the concern regarding the consolidation. And I just hope that the community knows that this group of people, everyone that I know and the people that I'm getting to know really are dedicated to this community and to the children. And we know that all the teachers, staff, and everybody that's put in, they continuously put in the work to make sure that our children have a place that they can depend on and have people that they can depend on. And we don't take that lightly. And, you know, we hope that you put that trust in us to help you continue to do your jobs and help these children and help this community. And I'm grateful they gave me this opportunity to be a part of it.
I also am glad to see the birth of this board. And truly, we are dedicated, dedicated to seeing that the students of Vanburg County will rank as high as the larger school districts in South Carolina. We want the best for our students and the best is what we are striving for. And with your help, we can do this. It takes all of us working for the same goal to come out with what we would have our children to be. So we thank you. We thank you for supporting us, we thank you for believing in us. But let us remember that it's all about our students. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to say thank you all because without you all, none of this would have happened tonight. And without God, it wouldn't happen. We must give him the thanks too because without him, nothing would have been, consolidation wouldn't have been on the table. We would have had this person saying this and this person saying that. We would have never came together as a community to work together to make this happen. So I'm going to work my very hard to make this board work as it should work. I'm not gonna pit on Mrs. Vanburg because what her idea is. But we must work as sisters and brothers and children of God. So if we put God first, everything will be all right.
Well, I really appreciate the hard work that's already been put in because I know it has not been easy. And even though education has been a part of my life, I always, Mr. Hallman, please excuse this, but I swore I'd never marry a preacher or a school teacher. but I swore I'd never marry a preacher or a schoolteacher. But I ended up marrying a schoolteacher. So it's, I've been in education forever. But this is certainly a different aspect of it. I'm the new kid on the block, and I feel that there's a lot to learn, but I'm ready and willing and hopefully able. So I'm looking forward to it. Banburg One and Banburg Two have had outstanding graduates. And I feel confident that we will continue to produce outstanding young people. And I look forward to it.
This is such a wonderful opportunity for Harry and me to come. We're gaining all those months and years and hours of all your hard work on the board with the community's support to really try to create and develop what is the best for our students. And I believe there are the future for us. And I think that's one of the most important things anyone can do. And it's overwhelming in a way for a person who's, you know, I'm aware this is a big responsibility and we have to do the right thing. But I feel today, sitting here, that there's such wonderful expertise leading or, you know, participating on this board. I think this is the smoothest board meeting I've ever in my life attended. I commend all of you. It's just incredible. And the opportunity for our county to really excel and shine, as it should, is spectacular. So thank you for allowing me to be part of this.
You're welcome. And I would just like to piggyback on something that you've mentioned before we adjourn the meeting. And this is to everyone that's out there in the audience, as well as the board members, but I know that you all know this. I am such and always have been just a really, really big advocate of kids. Someone paved the way for all of what we are today. And it's important that we do the same for those that's to come. And the last time that I checked, the statistics said that children are 27% of the world's population. But they are 100% our future. Remember that. So everything that you do, I know we have educators in the room. We have parents in the room, grandparents, aunties, uncles, friends, whatever your relationship is to any child, not just in this community, but certainly in this community. Keep that in mind. They are 100% of our future. So everything that we do will be reflected through them. And I just appreciate everyone for coming out this evening to witness this historic event. Dean, are you still with us?
I'm here, and I'm listening.
Okay, you're here.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Whitwer. We really appreciate you being a part of this opportunity as well. And is Dr. Jefferson here? Did she? Dr. Jefferson, how are you? Can you stand up? Dr. Jefferson? Thank you. Just wanted to say a quick hello and put my eyes on your eyes along with Dr. Whitwer. We just appreciate both of you willing to work with us. It's been a very, very long haul. And I think Ms. Bonaparte said it the best. It has been, there's just so much that we've had to do to bring this together, to bring it to fruition. And I believe that we've done it as seamlessly as we possibly have been able to do that. But we wouldn't have been able to do any of that without all of you all and the support. And I appreciate you, Mr. Boykin. We appreciate you, Dr. Simmons. Mr. Scott, we appreciate you for all the help that you've given us. Our staff in the back over in the corner that works and keeps us. Without you, we couldn't do what we do. And we just truly, truly appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. And with that being said, board members, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
At this time, I offer a motion. If nothing else to address, we adjourn this meeting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that we adjourn this meeting. Is there a second? A motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. You're in favor of adjourning this meeting? Please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The ayes have it. This meeting is.